Meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. I would like to ask my colleagues and those in attendance to please silence their phones and electronic devices, thank you. Please also be respectful and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will also be asked, you may also, you will also be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you will be escorted out. Please also note that according to Boston City Council rules, there is no, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor O'Royo. Counselor O'Royo. Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Vaughn.
Here.
Counselor Braden.
Here.
Counselor Coletta.
Here.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Flynn. Counselor Lara. Counselor Lu Xian.
Here.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
And Counselor Worrell.
President.
A quorum is present.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. We're taking things slightly out of order this morning, this afternoon. Our guest who's going to give the invocation is on, is on her way. So could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. To recess? We'll hold a brief recess while we're waiting for our guest, thank you. Thank you for your patience, everyone. We will continue the meeting. Please, Mr Clerk, could you please amend the record so that Counselor O'Royo is in attendance and Counselor Lara? Now on to the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favour of approving the minutes from the last meeting say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Mr Clerk, can you please read dockets 1134 to 1140?
Communications from Herona the Mayor, document number 1134. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,969,066 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 23 Title III C Nutrition Services Programme awarded by the US Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund nutrition services for older adults in the city of Boston. These services are enhanced by the Federal Nutrition Services Incentive Programme and the state elder lunch programme grants. Document number 1135. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,6875 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 Title III B Supportive Services awarded by the US Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund home-based support services for older adults in the city of Boston. Document number 1136. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $987,452.44 in the form of a grant from the federal fiscal year 22 Nutrition Services Incentive Programme awarded by the US Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. Document number 1137. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $524,287 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 23 Title III E Family Caregiver Support Programme awarded by the US Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund caregiver services for older adults in the city of Boston. Document number 1138. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $424,821 in the form of a grant for federal fiscal year 23 Title III A awarded by the US Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund costs for administration of Title III programmes. Document number 1139. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $177,271 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 23 Title III Ombudsman Programme awarded by the US Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund consumer protection programmes to improve long-term services for older adults in the city of Boston. And document number 1140. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $78,695 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 23 Title III D Disease Prevention and Health Promotion awarded by the US Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund services to assist older adults in Boston to prevent illness and manage chronic conditions.
Thank you, Mr Clerk. Dockets 1134 through 1140 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities. Mr Clerk, can you please read dockets 1141 through 1142?
Document number 1141. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $62,569 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 20 Byron Justice Assistance Grant Reallocation awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund annual Boston address verification procedures mandated by the Massachusetts Sex Offender Registry Board. And document number 1142. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $40,875 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 22 Port Security Grant Programme awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund installation and repowering of three Boston Police Department Harbour Patrol Unit vessels and new equipment for the Harbour Patrol Unit Dive Team.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The Chair recognises Counselor Flaherty, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Chair of Public Safety and Criminal Justice, with respect to document 1141, move for suspension of passage, this grant, a modest and small amount, this grant would fund the annual Boston address verification procedure mandated by the Mass Sex Offender Registry Board that allows Boston to continue to monitor various levels of convicted sex offenders residing in our neighbourhoods. And with respect to document 1142, also as she are moving for suspension of passage, this grant will fund installation of repowering, as mentioned by the clerk, of three Boston Police Department Harbour Patrol vessels and new equipment for the Harbour Patrol Unit Dive Team. That's a division of BPD that saves lives and protects folks in the harbour. In fact, as we all just saw, the recently credited with saving the lives of a father and son after pulling the pair from the water. So again, a very small amount that is needed down at the Harbour Patrol Unit. So Chair, I would like to move, S Chair, would like to move for a passage of both 1141 and 1142. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty seeks suspension of the rules and passage of document 1141. All of those in favour say aye?
Aye.
All of those saying, opposed, say nay? The ayes have it. Document 1141 has passed. Counselor Flaherty seeks suspension of the rules and passage of document 1142. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? The ayes have it. Document 1142 has passed. Mr Clerk, could you please amend the roll call to note that Counselor Fernandez-Anderson and Counselor Murphy have joined us? Thank you. So we go on to reports of public officers and others. Mr Clerk, please read document 1143.
Document number 1143. Notice received from the Mayor of the appointment of Mary Angelique Solas-Serrera as affirmative action officer on the Residency Compliance Commission for a term expiring December 1st, 2025.
Thank you, Mr Clerk. Document 1143 will be placed on file. We move on to reports of committees. Mr Clerk, please read document 0934.
Document number 0934. The Committee on Environmental Justice Resiliency in Parks, to which was referred on August 10th, 2022. Document number 0934. Message in order authorizing an appropriation order in the amount of $686,800 for the Cemetery Division of the Parks and Recreation Department and the Trust Office of the Treasury Department to be funded from the Cemetery Trust Fund established under Chapter 13 of the Acts of 1961. Submit a report recommending that the document ought to pass.
Thank you, Mr Clerk. The Chair recognises Counselor Lara, Chair of the Committee on Environmental Justice Resiliency in Parks. Counselor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. At our hearing, we were joined by Thomas Sullivan, the Director of Seminaries for the Cemetery Division, and Margaret Tyson, the Trust Manager of the Treasury Department. During the hearing, the administration respectively requested that the City Council release funds from the Cemetery Trust to support the maintenance, repair, improvement and embellishment of the three seminaries in Boston's open space for burials. Cemetery Trust were established in 1961 and mandated that any city and towns adopting the legislation maintain independent account on trusts separate from the department. Traditionally, this type of appropriation has been done annually. However, the last appropriation to the Cemetery Division from the trust was in October 2019 for $175,000. In breaking down the dollar amounts designated for the project, both seminaries, the panel elaborated upon the specific work needed at each of the sites. For example, to expand the veteran and indigent burial area at the Fairview Cemetery, the $28,800 are going to go towards laying new concrete foundation. And to rehabilitate the Mount Hope Cemetery, $258,000 will go toward design, construction and capital cost necessary to repair the disarray of the facility due to failure to just maintain the exterior, which has led to storm damage inside of the building as well. Finally, they want to rehabilitate the face of the Mount Hope Cemetery for $400,000, and that's going to go towards repairing the entrance that is facing the surrounding landscape. The administration explained that completing this work is necessary to serve and support the community at large, the bereaved and the staff on site. The timing for the interior repair at Mount Hope Cemetery is sensitive as the fall construction season approaches and as it concerns the health and safety of the cemetery employees, because like I mentioned, we have storm damage inside of the building where the employees are at. So the maintenance and repair projects discussed during the hearing were going to be, are going to be contracted out by the Parks Department. That was one of my concerns, is that this is going to be a large amount of money that's going to come out of the city. And so I had questions for the administration about how they were going to make sure that these contracts were in alignment with the administration's goals for women and minority-owned businesses. And so the contract uniting is going to first consult the Certified Business Directory to search for MWB companies to contact, and they are then going to fill out the Equitable Procurement Compliance and Assistance Form, send the scope of work to the Office of Economic Development and Inclusion for assistance with finding qualified bidders in related industries. And I have had a conversation with the Chief and confirmed that this is the proposed process to ensuring that we are hiring local women and minority-owned businesses. So as the Chair of the Committee for Environmental Justice Resilience in Parks, I recommend that this document ought to pass.
Thank you, Counselor Lara. Counselor Lara seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of document 0934. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Document 0934 has passed. We'll move on to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr Clerk, could you please read document 0888, please?
Document number 0888. Order for a hearing to ensure that all incidents of bullying and violence are properly reported to ensure a safe environment for all students and staff in the Boston public schools.
The Chair recognises Counselor Flaherty, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Chair, we just asked that this matter remaining committee, we held a hearing last Thursday that was recessed till this, this past Monday, there was obviously a disconnect with respect to the ask from the Maker and Chair as to who from BPS was being requested to attend the hearing, and as a result of which, we heard on Monday from Rochelle Nossu, she attended, she's the new Chief of Staff for the incoming, soon to begin, new superintendent, Mary Skipper, who starts on next Monday, and she asked that we, as a courtesy, give her an opportunity to get started and get a little time under her belt, and then we will reconvene that hearing on a very important discussion, one obviously that the incoming superintendent is, wants to participate, since her regrets that she wasn't able to participate to date, wants to work with the council and assure the council as well as students and parents of her commitment to safety, particularly around the issues of bullying and violence on school grounds. And so through the Chair, unless the Maker has anything to add to that, we'll be reconvening probably within the next few weeks. I think we've got a date, maybe the Chair can report a date that we've sent to BPS for their attendance. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Document 0888 will remain in committee. Mr Clerk, please read document 1098. Order regarding redistricting principles.
Document number 1098. Order for hearing regarding redistricting principles.
The Chair recognises Counselor Worrell, Vice Chair of the Committee on Redistricting. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for your leadership throughout the redistricting process. Thank you for your team, Wayne, and my team, Lindsay, Loton and Bruce and central staff, Shane, for all your help during this. As Vice Chair of the Redistricting Committee, we have been hard at work hitting the ground running to ensure we deliver fair, balanced and equal districts for the city of Boston. Already, we have two working sessions with the council. One last Friday, September 16th, and yesterday, September 20th. In our first working session, we announced a series of goals for this committee. One, we released proposed map seven days before, a public hearing to ensure adequate time for review. Committee elections and BPDA consolidate and publicise public data in a centralised location. And three, engage with community organisations and conduct outreach on the workings of the committee. Four, our first major public hearing will be Thursday, September 29th at 3pm. We will need the help of the entire council to bring members of their district to represent priorities and focuses for the committee. Our final goal is to release a map to this council between October 3rd to the 7th, incorporate a community and councillor input. We have also shared information with each council to educate the neighbourhood on the redistricting process. From yesterday's working session, we focused on split precincts in the surrounding communities of interest. There are 16 splits precincts which now cross, which now cross into two or three current council districts. They must be moved as a whole during the 22 City Council redistricting. These splits precincts have a total population of 50,226. Our goal as a committee is to ensure the voices of those constituents are heard and respected when drawing these lines. We look forward to continuing this process with the rest of the council and the city of Boston in order to achieve our ultimate goal of creating districts that represent the communities they serve. And I want to thank everyone else in attendance on making sure that we're moving redistricting forward here in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. Document 1098 will remain in committee. We can move on to motions, orders and resolutions. Mr Clerk, please read document 1144.
Document number 1144. Counselor Murphy offer the following. Order for a hearing to address the facility conditions of all BCYF pools to ensure city services to all residents.
The Chair recognises Counselor Murphy. You have the floor. Let's see where we are. One, two, three, yeah, that's all.
Thank you. So after multiple heatwaves and unprecedented lack of rainfall, Boston has experienced one of the warmest and driest summers on record. According to the US Drought Monitor's weekly report released on August 25th, roughly 96% of the state experienced severe drought conditions at some point this summer. Last month was the hottest August on record in Massachusetts, according to the data that the Atmospheric Administration shared. BCYF, Boston Centre for Youth and Families, manages 17 indoor pools, two outdoor pools and three beaches at the Curly Centre in South Boston. At the very start of the summer, only seven of the 19 pools were open and the three beaches at the Curly Community Centre in South Boston were closed. According to BCYF, the nine pools closed due to facility issues and capital construction projects were: the Curly Community Centre in South Boston, the Mattapan Community Centre Pool in Dorchester, the Parrish Street Community Centre Pool in East Boston, the Draper Pool in West Roxbury, the Blackstone Community Centre Pool in the South End, the Clarity Pool in Charlestown, the Hennican Community Centre Pool in Jamaica Plain and the Marshall and the Hallen Community Centre Pools, which are both in Dorchester. Only two of the seven open pools were located in neighbourhoods with an area median income lower than the city's average, then Mason Pool in Roxbury and the pool inside the Leahy Halleran Community Centre in Dorchester. In addition, no public pools were open at one point in the South End and West Roxbury. These closures were a disservice to residents, prohibiting several neighbourhoods from the city's services like recreational swimming, aquatic lessons, especially in one of Boston's hottest and driest summers. In short, it is in the best interest of our residents to proactively address the current facility conditions of all indoor and outdoor pools to avoid sudden closures due to facility issues, so preparations and renovations can be made for next summer. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Counselor, I think it was Counselor Coletta.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. And I want to meet the Maker, since the times of conversation, as you know, given what constituents in Charlestown are going through, and I've brought up the Clarity Pool many times during budget season and our ARPA debate, trying to get ARPA and federal money to help renovate this pool. But it's honestly been a travesty that we only just found out a week before the pool was supposed to open, that it was going to be closed indefinitely for the summer. Even though actors at BCYF knew just how deteriorated the pool was, and I'm not talking about folks in this administration, this dates back all the way to Menino in 2008, when they funded assessments and they knew just how bad it was. And it continued through the Walsh administration, and the only thing that was done was quick-fix mandates. And so now we are stuck with this mess, it is a mess, and we're trying to figure out how much it's going to cost for a complete renovation, and the number is outrageous. And so I am thankful for you bringing this up, Counselor Mejia. I'm thankful for my other at-large city councillors for supporting Charlestown in their endeavour to try to open up their pool. I'm also concerned about the Parrish Street Pool as well, which has significant... I'm also concerned about the Parrish Street Pool as well, which has significant delays. So I really look forward to this hearing, and I look forward to advocating for my constituents during the hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please add my name, echo those comments. Obviously, it is timely on a number of fronts. One, we have resources in front of us. Two, we're going to be heading, before you know it, into another budget cycle, so it's more than important and critical to do an overall assessment. It seems as though our pools were treated like our schools, many of them obviously in our schools. So it probably calls upon us to do an assessment of all of our city properties. It's our community centers, it's our libraries, et cetera, to see what condition they're in, so that we're not faced with this situation years from now on on those facilities. But in addition to the fact that we need to address and assess and rehab, and in some instances, probably new capital projects for pools, we also need to talk about the programming at that pools. It's probably more essential now that we've got swimming lessons, et cetera, that are in these schools, so that we can address issues that we've seen playing out at pools and beaches in our city and across the Commonwealth, with children not being able to, not knowing how to swim and go drowning. So that said, again, please add my name, look forward to an expedited hearing, and let's get all the stakeholders in here, and let's see what funds we have available now to address some of those critical concerns, and let's see what we need to get in the pipeline for capital moving forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to my colleague for bringing this to the council. And I just want to uplift Counselor Coletta and how hard you have been working towards making sure that Charlestown residents really feel seen and heard as they navigate through this process. So it's just been really great to work alongside you on that. So thank you for your leadership in that space. And I really do appreciate Counselor Murphy bringing this into the chamber as something that's happening citywide, because we have spent a lot of time and energy really looking at what we could be doing as a city as a whole. And I think this is a great example of doing a full audit and assessment of what's happening across the entire city. I know, I always, even though it's a joke, but it's not funny, you know, I didn't know how to swim when I was a kid, right? And so I made sure that my daughter learned how to swim. But, you know, the pool is not just for recreation, it's also life-saving. So I think we have a responsibility and an opportunity to really uplift what we can do as a council, right? So it's not just about blaming or shaming or things like that when it comes to the administration, because a lot of these things we have inherited. And so I really do look forward to the opportunity to have a robust hearing, but more importantly, what we're going to do with the information as we prepare for our, under the leadership of my colleague Counselor Anderson, for next year's budget season, which is going to prove to be an amazing turnaround now that we know what we know. And the question is, what are we going to do differently moving forward? So looking forward to that, and thank you, Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Counselor Mahia. Would anyone else like to add their name? Beg your pardon, sorry. Counselor Luizhen, I didn't see the light on over there.
Thank you. Also, please add my name, but also just want to say thank you for bringing this as an issue, it's a citywide issue. I would just like to ask, you know, for consideration that B C Y F, the pools that the city has are within our purview, and so that's important that we have a hearing on that. But it could also be a good opportunity for us to also hear from the state about what's happening to our, the pools that are within their jurisdiction, that are within our city, because we've heard a number of concerns from across the city about pools that are run by the state. And it could be a great forum to also bring the state in, so just putting that out as an idea as we address the citywide issue.
Thank you, Counselor Luizhen. Anyone else want to, wish to speak? Okay. Would anyone else like to add their name? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Lara, Counselor Luizhen, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Worrell, and please add the Chair. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Docket 1144 will be referred to the Committee on City Service and Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 1145.
Docket number 1145, Counselor Murphy offer the following, order for a hearing to address the current lifeguard shortage affecting B C Y F's pools.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. So given that the context of this hearing is similar to the previous one, I'll keep this brief, but my office and I did go back and forth and decided it would be best to file these separately, so that we could focus on the previous order with facilities in B C Y F and also in B P S, because we know overall staffing shortages is a crisis across the city. But there is and has been a current labor shortage of lifeguards in Boston that has affected our B C Y F pools. They have changed some of the city requirements with residency and increasing pay this summer because there was such a crisis to keep pools open. According to B C Y F, there are four pools closed today due to staffing shortages. We also know, depending on what day it is, sometimes they shift lifeguards, which is hard for management, but also the lifeguards themselves, they don't always know what pool they need to show up to. The Henigan Community Center in Jamaica Plain, the Marshall Community Center Pool in Dorchester, which is hard, more because previously it was closed all summer due to facilities issues, which did go well, and the pool was reopened and the facilities were complete, the repairs were complete, but now it's closed for staffing shortages. The Perkins Community Center in Dorchester, and the Condon Community Center Pool in South Boston, which has been closed for a long time because of staffing shortages now. Like the facility issues, these closures are a disservice to residents prohibiting several neighborhoods from city services like recreational swimming and aquatic lessons, especially in one of Boston's hottest and driest summers. This is why I'm ordering a hearing, order to address and brainstorm solutions for the lifeguard labor shortage affecting pools managed by B C Y F in order to ensure equitable city services to all of our city residents. Like Counselor Flaherty said, he hopes for a speedy hearing, which I will work with Counselor Bach to make sure that happens. But we also know that even though the summers are hot and the pools may be used more, but these pools that are not the outdoor two pools or the beaches are used all winter and fall also. So we do want to make sure that the staffing shortage is fixed, and we can support that in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Luizhen, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Worrell, and please add my name as well. Thank you. Let's see where we are. Docket 1145 will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Let's move on to Docket 1146. Mr. Clerk, could you please read Docket 1146?
Docket number 1146, Counselors Coletta and Mahia offer the following, order for a hearing to address fire emergencies and other emergency response.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. You have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. So ultimately, I will be withdrawing this docket because Counselor Luizhen introduced something before I got on the council. But I do just want to provide some context, and I look forward to merging our efforts to try to get services for our families who have gone through disasters. This, so my intention with this was to elevate the issues of our response to families who have suffered from a fire, a building collapse. We had a building collapse in the North End, where hundreds of people were out of home for a very, very long time. And this is not to cast any sort of negativity on the fire department, who did an incredible job in East Boston recently at the Princeton Street Fire, when 28 families were displaced. Or Office of Neighborhood Services, they were incredible and were there on scene. I think it's in the subsequent weeks afterwards, where families are kind of looking around once the dust has settled, and the city has left them to their own devices to figure out what they're going to do for housing. The Office of Housing Stability does provide support for these families, but they are told to find a lease, and then they will be given first and last rent. What happens when you're already on the thresholds of barely hanging on in East Boston, you can barely afford it now, and you can't find a lease that you can afford? These families are still homeless to this day. And thanks to East Boston Mutual Aid, or Mutual Aid Eastie, and East Boston Social Centers, they were the fiscal sponsors and stewards of the money that was donated and helped disperse it in an equitable way, which I think is a model for us to consider. But I think it's time to move past this ad hoc process of what happens after this type of disaster and standardize it through the city. And utilizing Office of Housing Stability, and Counselor Luizhen and I have already talked about this, potentially city vouchers, because these people are homeless. And so I just, I'm very excited for this conversation. I apologize that it was a duplicate, although I didn't know, but I am looking forward to the hearing, and thank you again.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you to my colleague, Counselor Coletta. And I am really looking forward to working alongside Counselor Luizhen. You know, being on the council now for two and a half years, what we have noticed in our office is that we've become the crisis management center, and oftentimes, we're helping to support people, sometimes with our own campaign funds. And it becomes really taxing and tapping into our network to help support people who are in crisis. So I do agree that there is something that we need to do better to support folks. And I know that Counselor Anderson has been talking and been thinking about ways that we can actually help support people who are navigating crises. So some of it could just be through just fire, but there are a lot of other cases, like folks who are in domestic violence situations that need to go, or people who have suffered a loss due to homicide and they're being traumatized. So there are a lot of different issues that are happening in our community, and I think this particular hearing could help really open up the space for all different types of situations that our residents find themselves in. So definitely look forward to working alongside Counselor Luizhen, and I would just offer that we open it up a little bit to look at all people who are experiencing housing crises here in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mahia. Docket 1146 is withdrawn.
Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 1147 into the record.
Docket number 1147, Counselor Luizhen offer the following, order for a hearing to discuss city of Boston Code 12-16 Safe Sharps Disposal Program.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Luizhen. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Braden as an original co-sponsor.
Seeing and hearing, no objections. The second sponsor is so added.
Thank you. So I just want to first thank the constituents who have been emailing and bringing this matter to our attention in my office for digging deep to figure out what the status of this ordinance is. As many of us know, September is National Recovery Month, a time where we celebrate and honor those folks who are in recovery, and the dedication that their providers show them. Many on the council this year and in past years have participated in needle cleanups and know firsthand how important it is to have a convenient and safe access to needle drop-off locations. This ordinance that was passed in 2020 was a response to all of that. However, and it merely requires pharmacies that sell the syringes to provide a way to safely dispose of them. But what we've seen and what constituents have brought to my attention is that this ordinance has not been followed through. If it was put into effect, it's not just about those using drugs or needle waste, but it's also about our seniors and about diabetics and those who are in need of a safe and convenient location to drop off their sharps. The Safe Sharp Ordinance is about a broad infectious disease prevention strategy that helps with prevention and transmission of HIV/AIDS, hepatitis C, and other communicable diseases. It's about a broader strategy of connecting active users to resources and services and about overdose prevention. So the ordinance was intended to create over 100 collection sites across the city of Boston, and requiring pharmacies to provide the city with data on sharps collection on an annual basis that would help inform how we are attacking the issue. And, you know, the ordinance also provides pharmacies with implementing a different collection action plan if they didn't want to have needle collection on site. That would require a review by the Boston Public Health Commission, and I S D is empowered with the ability to enforce the law. And so this ordinance started, the work on this ordinance started in 2017 with many councillors who are still on the city council. And there was a lot of work put into it, revisions, and coordination with administration and the pharmacy industry, but there's a lot of pushback as well. But it was eventually signed into law in 2020, and I believe it was Counselor at Large, Counselor Sabby George, that really spearheaded, helped to really shepherd this through the council. And so the purpose of this hearing order is to elevate the concerns that constituents have brought to my attention, and also to get clarity on the status of the ordinance, what good is an ordinance if it's not being implemented and if we're not seeing it enforced. And so I S D has the ability to enforce this ordinance. We have B P H C that has a role here, and our pharmacies and corporations that are making millions of dollars off of drugs and the use of medication need to be able to provide for the collection of syringes onsite or provide for an alternative. And so I look forward to this hearing order to get clarity on enforcement. I want to thank the Office of Recovery Services, Emergency Medical Services, our hospitals and health centers, and our nonprofits who have been working on this issue, who have been working on the issue of cleaning up and disposing of used needles. And so I think, and I want to make sure that our pharmacies are also playing a better role in helping us solve and attack this issue. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luizhen. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really don't have much to add to Counselor Luizhen's comments. We have been hearing for the last past year, since this ordinance was passed, of a resident who have attempted to find safe ways to dispose of sharps in the neighborhood of Alston Brighton, and they came up with, they didn't find anywhere that they could do that. So this is a concern for folks who are intravenous drug users, but also many of the folks I hear about, folks who are diabetics and they have coffee cans full of needles in their basement because they don't have a safe place to dispose of them. We have folks who are undergoing fertility treatment where they need to use injections and insulin users. And this really is a public health issue, and it is, you know, we know how much work went into doing, making this ordinance under the leadership of Counselor Sabby George. And it is discouraging to think that all that effort went into writing a good ordinance, and that we're not able to make it work. So I'm really looking forward to this conversation, and I hope that we can rectify this situation and have safe, needed disposal options available to all of our residents all across the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Is anyone else seeking to speak on this matter? Would any other councillors like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Worrell, and please add myself. Docket 1147 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, oh, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson? Did you want to have your name added, or do you want to speak on that? No. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, can you add her as well, Mr. Clerk? Thank you. All right. Docket 1147 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. And now, Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket 1148 into the record?
Docket number 1148, Counselor Luizhen offer the following, order for a hearing on the needs and services for migrant populations.
Where are we at? 1148. The Chair recognizes Counselor Luizhen. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a hearing order to discuss how we are helping our migrants who are here and how the city is ensuring that we're providing services. As many folks know, last week, about 50 migrants arrived on Martha's Vineyard as a result of a political stunt by Governor DeSantis in Florida. They arrived after being fraudently induced in traffic to board planes with false promises of work, educational opportunities, and help with immigration paperwork. And Boston generally, that moment just crystallized what we've been seeing over some time of the arrival of migrants here in our city. Boston has seen substantial rise in the number of migrants seeking shelter and asylum over the past over months, many of whom have been denied access to shelter, many of whom have been showing up in our emergency rooms, Children's Hospital, Boston Medical Center, Brigham and Women's. And so my office has been doing a lot of work around this issue. And so as a result of, you know, what we saw last week, it was just a good idea to pull pull together a hearing order so we can just put out plain the work that we've been doing and the work that we want to make sure that Moya, the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Advancement is doing to support our immigrants and our migrant communities. There are so many non-profits here who are also doing the work, who have been leaders here in this space and bringing them in to address the work that they've been doing to help migrants that have been arriving from across the border, whether they be Haitian migrants, Venezuelan migrants, Mexican migrants, Honduran migrants. We've been seeing a steady increase. And so we know that this country has a damning past when it comes to meeting the needs of our migrants, particularly our black migrants, as we saw last year with how the patrol agents engaged and harassed and physically harmed Haitian migrants at the border. And here on this council, I filed a resolution to end title 42, which was an immediate deportation without access to the asylum process or legal process to migrants arriving at the border, an act that has been held up in court. So advocates all over the country have been dealing with this issue, we've been dealing it here on the city council via the ARPA funds. My office along with councillor Ricardo Arroyo's office fought for $1.1 million in temporary funding for temporary housing because of all of the issues that migrants were facing. And so we got that allocation, but we haven't seen implementation. And so bringing Moya into city hall together with other non-profits that have been doing the work to see how we can better support them, together with state actors, really, because we've been seeing this happening in other jurisdictions as well, including New York, including Washington DC, that have been able to allocate more resources to addressing the needs of our migrants. So we have a lot of work to do, I'm looking forward to doing the work with my colleagues and to also, you know, talk about how we work in deeper partnership with state and federal government in addressing this issue. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Luizhen. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Councillor Arroyo, councillor Bach, councillor Coletta, councillor Fernandez-Anderson, councillor Flaherty, councillor Lara, councillor Mahia, councillor Murphy, councillor Worell, and please add the chair. Docket 1148 will be referred to the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigrant Advancement. We move on to personnel orders. Mr Clerk, please read docket 1149.
Docket number 1149, councillor Flynn for councillor Worell.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1149. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Late files. Now moving on to late files, I'm informed by the clerk that there is one late file matter. The late file matter includes a letter of absence from councillor Flynn. The late file is on everyone's desk, you'll take a vote to add this item to the agenda. All those in favour of adding the late file matter to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr Clerk, please read the first late file, which is the letter of absence from councillor Flynn.
Dear council colleagues, please be advised that I'm unable to attend today's city council meeting as I'm attending the National League of Cities meetings convening in San Francisco. My staff will be in attendance and I will review the tape of the meeting when it becomes available. Thank you. Boston City Council President Ed Flynn.
Thank you, Mr Clerk. We move on to the green sheets. Oh, sorry, the last, this late file will be placed on file, thank you. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. We move on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there is one addition to the consent agenda. The chair moves for adoption of the consent agendas presented and all of those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. Do we have any announcements? Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, madam chair. I feel like we must give credit when credit is due and I would like to give a huge shout out and thank you to the MBTA. After a 30-day shutdown of the Orange Line, our MBTA workers were able to make five years of improvements, including replacing 3,500 feet of track, 14,000 feet of rails, 20 units of special track, 400 rail fasteners, six low zone removals and signal upgrades. Quite the work in only 30 days. Let's continue this hard work to provide a smooth, reliable tea for all of our residents. This is a quality of life issue that I know many of us on this council work with and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Murphy. The chair recognises councillor Bach.
Thank you, madam chair. Two things, on a personal note, I just wanted to wish a happy wedding anniversary to my parents, 37 years. And on a district note, well, and really citywide, just wanted to wish Hanukkah to all the Jewish constituents who are celebrating Rosh Hashanah over this weekend, going into the start of next week, which obviously is the start of the Jewish New Year. So just wanted to wish them all.
Thank you councillor Bach. Councillor Mahia?
Thank you, chair. I just wanted to thank the fire department for putting me through the wringer yesterday. I was really impressed with just really recognising the hard work that you all have to do every day to save lives here in the city of Boston. Having to put out a fire was an adrenaline rush. Needless to say, it was fate though, but nonetheless, I still felt like I was doing something big. But I just want to say thank you because that gave me a very interesting insight to the tools that you use, the hard work that it takes. And so just I have a newfound appreciation for your work and just wanted to thank you all for giving us an opportunity to experience just that. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Mahia. Councillor Worell?
Thank you, madam chair. And I just wanted to invite all my colleagues to an event that we're having for Hicks Auto Body, Willie E. Hicks Senior. We're going to be honouring him on Saturday between 12 and 2. He's been in business for 52 years, black-owned business, multi-generational, and we're going to be renaming one of the streets after Willie Hicks Senior. So want to make sure that everyone knew about it and all welcome to come in and join in festivities. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Worell. Councillor Arroyo?
Thank you, madam chair. I just wanted to update the body on the status of my uncle and thank folks who have been praying for him. He has recently, yesterday, come out of his coma and is responsive, so we're hopeful that we're in a better place today certainly than we were when I was here last week. And so I thank folks for praying and keeping him in your prayers. His name is Carlos. And so if folks are willing to keep praying for him, it seems to be working and so we're very grateful. Thank you.
We wish him a continued path to recovery. Thank you councillor. Anyone else? Oh, councillor Murphy?
Thank you. Just want to remind everyone that this weekend, the 24th, is the third and final open streets in Dorchester, so we hope you all come out and join us. It will be a fun day, as the last two have been. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Murphy. We will move on to memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For councillor Arroyo, Flynn, Luizhen and the entire city council, David Viterini, father of Dave Viterini. For councillor Arroyo, Clifton Reed. For councillor Coletta, Barbara Lassuma Sullivan. For councillor Luizhen, Sunny Walker. For councillor Murphy, James F. Monahan. A moment of silence, please. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of these individuals and it is scheduled to meet again in the Ionella Chamber on Wednesday, September 28th at 12 noon. All in favour of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned.